You're gonna talk before?
Well, good evening. It's seven o'clock and it's time for our Facebook Live Bible Study. I have Becky on with me tonight. You'll be hearing her read. She came buzzing in here about fifteen minutes ago and was able to make it in time, getting out of a meeting at church in order to get here. What a beautiful day that we have had today. I got to go outside for just a little while and, and man, what a, what a, what a beautiful day. It's gonna be cold on Sunday. Don't let that keep you from coming to church. But my goodness, the latest forecast is gonna be like a low of eighteen. By the time we come to church, it'll be warmer. If you've got a new sweater for Christmas, you're gonna have another Sunday to get to wear that new sweater. I did. And so we, oh, I see Lynn is on with us. She didn't get to make last week, I don't think. Good to see you. Nelda's on, John Ellis is on. I hope you all can see one another's names as they pop up. It's always so cool to, to get to see that. This is our second class in the, in the Lent Bible Study. It's gonna be a six-week study in the Gospel of Luke. And always remember this, if you miss Thursday night, and all of us have to miss at times, but if you do miss one, or maybe if just Thursday night's not a good time for you to be on live, you can always go to our website and they're archived there under Watch and Listen. When you go to Watch and Listen, you'll see worship services that are there. The, the most recent ones are at the top. But there's also on that list, under Watch and Listen will be Online Bible Study. And if you click on that, this one is right at the top of the list. I've been, been there already to make sure that the one from last week got archived. We have awesome staff, people who make sure things like this Facebook Live gets, gets recorded on, on, on our website. And I really appreciate it. Uh, let's see, one other thing as we gather in here, be sure and set your, Martha Miller is on. Wow, Martha, good to see you. I know you've been a bit ill lately and it's awfully good to see you on. Remember, set your clocks forward this Saturday. Because we spring forward into daylight saving time. And now see, I've already given you two excuses for not coming to church on Sunday. It's daylight savings time. We lose an hour and it's gonna be really, really cold. But it's a, it's gonna be an awesome Sunday to be here. I love this series that Nathan is in right now called The Power of R-E. We've had, uh, the first one was R-E-P-E-N-T, Repent. There's one coming on Resolve. I don't remember the one that's coming for this Sunday, but, but an awesome sermon series, so join us this week. Okay, it's time, the commercials are over, the announcements, and it's time to get into our, our Sunday School lesson, or Sunday School, our, our Bible Study. I see Becky's over here. It makes me nervous to see her with her phone out, typing with her little finger, because that usually means she's putting in something and I don't want her to post on, on this study. But anyhow, uh, let's get into our, our lesson for the evening. Uh, on this final journey of Jesus's to Jerusalem, we're gonna go, we started with the very end of Luke nine. Last week we did ten. This week we're doing chapter eleven. Next week we'll do chapter twelve. There's a couple of weeks where we'll do two chapters. Kind of amazes me that he, uh, it, it just had said that Jesus set his face toward Jerusalem at nine fifty-one. And in tonight's lesson, it tells us that he's in Bethany. And if you were looking at a, at a Bible map, you would see that, okay, when Jesus did the Transfiguration and set his face toward Jerusalem, he was up in Galilee. And so he would have gone east into Jordan, traveled down through what's modern-day Jordan, and then crossed the Jordan River headed west to go to Jerusalem. Uh, he would have come, will come to Jericho, he will come to Bethany. And in tonight's study, he's actually entering into Bethany. So there's a, there's a geographic journey, a physical journey that Jesus makes toward Jerusalem and the cross. But there's a more important spiritual journey, and we're on that journey as part of Lent. You see why I picked this, uh, these few chapters of, of Luke. We'll, we'll go right up to Luke chapter nineteen, which is Palm Sunday. Let's see, uh, okay, last week, I wanna do just a quick review before I put Becky to work reading. Jesus sent out the, the twelve earlier in the, in the Gospel of Luke, earlier in his ministry. And in Luke chapter ten, he sent out the seventy-two. They did their work. Somebody, excuse me, post for me, what happened as those seventy-two went out to do their work? In other words, what I'm kinda asking for is what were the results? Did anything good happen? What kind of good stuff happened if it did? And I have to learn that it takes just a little while for the sound to get from my study at home here to your, uh, your device. And it's flying through the, through the air at five Gs, but it'll, it'll get to you. And then you have to type a comment in and, and I'll see it pop up on my screen. So I usually just keep yapping, okay, Christy tells us the seventy-two were amazed. Yes, whenever they spoke, the Spirit was with them. And so they were able to, they, they were very pleased. Yes, thank you, John. They were, they were able to see the Holy Spirit at work through them, and it surprised them. They didn't expect to see this. They, uh, Jesus was extremely hap- yes, thank you, Christy. Jesus was extremely happy to see what was happening. It's like he's saying, yes, they're getting it and they're taking the work on. It was an affirmation for him that, okay, I got twelve that can do this work. Now I've got twelve plus seventy-two. I, I think this is a great affirmation for us in the church. I like to think that the twelve, you know, they weren't called clergy, but you might think of them as clergy. These seventy-two, I think of them as little laypersons. And that's where the work of the church, the real work of the church gets done. Everyone's got their ministry, and Jesus is saying, wow, these seventy-two are taking on their ministry. They're doing what I've sent them to do, teaching and preaching and healing, casting out evil spirits, doing exactly the things that Jesus had done. It's a call for us today. Jesus was challenged by Pharisee about, what do I need to do to interpret, um, I'm sorry, to inherit eternal life? And, and, and what does the scripture say and how do you interpret it? And the man answered, "Love the Lord your God with all your heart, soul, mind, and strength, and also love your neighbor as yourself." Jesus says, yeah, you're, you're right. And then the man says, hmm, who is my neighbor? Who does, what does Jesus do? What does he, how does he respond to that question? The man says, okay, so who is my neighbor? Pharisees weren't, usually weren't particularly friendly to Jesus. They're oftentimes trying, trying to trap him. This man may have been trying to sort of narrow the field, you know, who's my neighbor? If I gotta love my neighbor, how many people is that? Is that the, is that the people who live on the other side of the street from me? Maybe on either side of me, on my side of the street? Uh, is it all the people in my neighborhood? Is it just Methodist, or is it just us Baptists, or is it just us Lutherans? Who's my neighbor? Uh, and so Jesus, what, how does he reply to that? To us, we've almost trivialized it by the answer, by the way we describe it. He told a parable, and it's the parable of the what? Somebody that, uh, the sound is traveling at those five Gs and I'm waiting for, for an answer to come back. Thank you. Boy, Christy, you're on it tonight. The parable about enemies, yes. And the enemy is a Samaritan. And so we often call it the parable of the good Samaritan. And it's, it's almost, thank you, Martha, and it's almost like we trivialize that. He tells the story, and it's a, it's a beautiful story. It's a very powerful one. And we need to really remember it in their culture. Jews and Samaritans didn't like one another. In fact, Jews rarely travel through Samaria. The, when the, when the exile came in the north, the, the people were taken away from the middle part of the country. Foreigners were brought in, and the Jewish people who stayed there intermarried with them and had children. And so Samaritans were, uh, I think last week I talked about Georgia, Tennessee, and Kentucky, with Tennessee being in the middle and Samaria. Well, they were, they were viewed by Jews in Galilee and Judea in Kentucky and Georgia. These, uh, these Samaritans were viewed as kinda mixed race, not pure Jews, and so they didn't like them. In fact, they treated them as enemies. And Christy's right. It was a parable of the enemy. Uh, a Jewish man was going from Jerusalem to Jericho, went through a very dangerous area. He was beaten, robbed, and left to die. A priest came by and saw him and went on his way. In fact, he crossed over to the other side. A Levite came. Uh, thank you, Lynn. Yes, they thought of him as spiritually unclean. The Levite didn't do a thing for him. Now here's a, here's a Jewish brother, uh, two of those who passed by. And then the third person to come by is supposed to be the enemy. And the enemy stops, and he, he takes care of him. And he even puts him on his donkey, takes him into town, and gives the innkeeper money and says, "Take care of him until I return. If I owe you when I come back, I'll pay you." That is such beautiful hospitality. And then, and, and Jesus says, "Now who was the neighbor?" And the Pharisee kind of begrudgingly said, "The man who took care of him." And Jesus says, "That's right. Now you go and do that." So that's, the lesson for us is everybody's our neighbor. Doesn't have to be somebody who lives in, in our neighborhood. It doesn't have to be someone who votes like us or goes to the same church. Uh, doesn't, it doesn't have to be somebody who goes to church. Uh, everyone should be viewed as our neighbor, and we're to love them as ourselves. The world is our neighborhood. At the end of Luke ten, Jesus came to Bethany. Oh, I'm gonna, let's, let's review that story real quickly. The two sisters, Martha and Mary, uh, they greet Jesus differently. Martha is busy preparing a meal, and you can just hear the pots and the pans rattling, and, and she's getting the meal ready. Mary's not helping her one bit. Mary's sitting with Jesus, listening to him and, and, uh, hearing what Jesus has to say. And Martha comes bursting into the room and says, "Make her help me. Look what, she's not doing anything." How does Jesus respond to Martha? You know, Martha's upset, and understandably so. She's working hard. She needs somebody to set the table or, or to, to pour the drinks or do something and help her. And instead, Mary's just sitting there, listening to Jesus. And so Jesus doesn't say, "Yeah, Mary, get up and go help Martha. I'm hungry." Instead, why, why does Jesus respond to Martha? We talked about how sometimes we each are called to be Martha's, and sometimes we're called to be Mary's. Uh, we're, we're from positive, those two. Uh, if nobody did the work, if we didn't have a Martha, we'd all sit around and be hungry, wouldn't we? But, uh, but Martha was distracted. And sometimes we can get so busy that we don't do the more important things. Thank you. Uh, Lynn says, "Jesus said Mary had made the right choice of what to do. She had chosen correctly." Jesus needed a listening ear. He's on his way to the cross. He's not so worried or, or needful of a big meal. He's not, he doesn't need all the noise of, of what was coming out of the kitchen. He needs somebody to be quiet. Mary's done the better thing. Thank you. Uh, she's being sorry for him. She's being a friend to Jesus. And so often, we kinda need to stop and to listen and to, to soak things up. There's a time to be Martha's. There's a time to be Mary's. Oh, I see Sue Dotson on tonight. Good to see you, Sue. Um, okay, Becky just cannot wait to read. And here I've been reviewing last week. Becky, if you would, read Luke eleven verses one through four.
One day, Jesus was praying in a certain place. When he finished, one of his disciples said to him, "Lord, teach us to pray, just as John taught his disciples." He said to them, "When you pray, say, 'Father, hallowed be your name. Your kingdom come. Give us each day our daily bread. Forgive us our sins, for we also forgive everyone who sins against us. And lead us not into temptation.'"
For the honors of glory and the power forever now. I'm, no, Becky's looking to see, where is that? We, we get, we kinda do a composite. The Lord's Prayer shows up in a couple of different places, and we sort of put them together. And there's a, there's a, a pattern here that Luke likes to show us, where Jesus will do something, or he'll teach something. He'll be busy with the apostles, and then he goes away to praise. A little bit like the Mary site of Jesus comes out. Uh, there's the movement, the activity, the teaching, the public part, and then there's the private part. And the apostles, whenever he finished praying on this particular day, they said, "Teach us to pray." Now let me ask you something. Why would they ask for that particular thing? Why, why do you think the apostles would say, "Lord, teach us how to pray"? Maybe we just take that for granted, but I think it's good to stop and think about, they see him praying, and then they, they say, "Teach us how to do that." Wonder why? And there can be a lot of different reasons why they would make that request. I'll throw out, uh, he knew he was the, uh, they knew he was closest to the Father. They could see that closeness, yes. Uh, they want to, they want to sense that closeness too. I'm wondering, uh, I'm, I'm wondering if they would like to see, uh, exactly, come into God's presence. If they feel like if he can just show us how to pray like he prays, yes, Becky says he gets results. They feel, they see that he's in God's presence. He's always asking for God's guidance. When Jesus prays, things happen. He gets good results. And, uh, and so they also mentioned John the Baptist. It's like, John taught his disciples how to pray. Man, he's got some praying disciples, so we wanna pray as well. And, and so it's, it's a good, it's a good request. I think that thing about seeing, uh, I, I think that thing about seeing uh, Jesus pray and get results would have been, would have been a key to that. A member of our church texted me the other day and said, "Do we have a class that teaches us how to be prayer warriors?" And I said, "No, we've got a prayer group. We've got, in fact, we've got more than one prayer group." Without, we've, uh, at times we'll have groups that sort of focus on prayer. And so she talked to her Director of Christian Education. Somebody else had said, "You know, I'd like to have a class on more powerful prayer." And so they're, they're looking into starting that class. People still want to be able to pray like Christ. It's a good thing, uh, to always be studying and learning. Uh, I've got a book that says, "When You Pray", and it's a, it's a guide to how to pray very powerfully. Uh, I'm still learning. What elements do you see in the Lord's Prayer? In other words, uh, I think this is a model prayer for us. And so in it, there are some things that Jesus says that, um, I don't have to use his words in order to use those elements. There are some parts, some lessons in this that go beyond the words. I'm not sure that Jesus meant for us to say, "Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come." Okay, reverence to God. That starts right at the beginning. Hallowed be thy name. That means your name is holy. Your name is separate from all other names, and it's a way to praise God. So when we pray, we don't have to use the word hallowed, but we should always be praising and giving reverence to God. What else is in this prayer? Okay, Lynn's hit on the, the, uh, the same, yeah, thank you, Lynn. Okay, praise, asking for forgiveness. Okay. You, you've hit three of them there. There's adoration, yes. There is, uh, there's praise, then there's asking forgiveness. I, I find something interesting. I hope you've noticed this. We ask for just as much forgiveness as we're willing to forgive others. "Forgive me," and we say trespasses. Uh, don't let that word hang you up. We're, we're saying, "Forgive me my sins. Forgive me my debts. Forgive me where I goof up, just as much as I forgive those who goof up against me." I have to think about that, because sometimes in that prayer, we're reminded that we need to be praying for others. Asking for guidance, yes. "Lead me not into temptation, but, uh, to resist evil." Asking for our needs. And do you notice what kind of needs are we asked for in this prayer? Yes, Christy says, "We ask with expectation, accepting it. Help me when I'm tempted." Yes. Uh, Jesus would never lead us into temptation, but we are tempted, and we're praying for, uh, for help when we're tempted. The needs that we pray for, that word "daily," I think is important. "Give us today our daily bread." Uh, I'm tempted to pray for next year's bread. You know, I, I often pray for things that are way out in the future, assuming that I have a future. And this is saying, pray for what we need today, you know, shelter, clothing, food, just the essentials, our needs. I pray so much for wants and desires and, and luxuries when we're taught to pray for needs and only those that are daily needs. It's a model prayer, meaning we don't have to use the words that Jesus used, but it's good to use that model of prayer. Something else I noticed, it's really short. And there's another teaching where Jesus says, "When you pray, don't be like the Pharisees and babble on and on and on." It's not the quantity of words, it's the sincerity. It's getting right to the heart of God. Jesus doesn't say it here, but Jesus clearly listened when he prayed. Before he, um, to make some point, before he selected his twelve apostles, he went up on a mountainside and he prayed all night long. He came down the next morning and said, uh, Matthew, John, Peter. He starts picking them and saying, "Come, I need you to be my apostles." He had listened. He had prayed and he had listened, and, and that's another lesson I have to keep learning. It, it's, it's a beautiful prayer, and I don't mean to put down, sing it together in worship, but it, it's not just meant to be memorized and prayed. It's elements of simple, direct, and balanced prayer. Uh, sometimes we'll use a different version when we did communion, uh, just a week or so ago. Um, I guess that was last Sunday, wasn't it? Yeah. Um, we used the prayer from the message. That's one that Becky had sent to Nathan. And it's paraphrased, and it uses more common, everyday English. It ends by saying, "God, you can do anything. You are awesome." And again, is that's, that's praise and adoration. Okay, Becky. Luke eleven verses five through thirteen, please.
Then he said to them, "Suppose one of you has a friend, and he goes to him at midnight and says, 'Friend, lend me three loaves of bread, because a friend of mine on a journey has come to me, and I have nothing to set before him.' Then the one inside answers, 'Don't bother me. The door is already locked, and my children are with me in bed. I can't get up and give you anything.' I tell you, though, he will not get up and give him the bread, because he is his friend. Yet because of a man's boldness, he will get up and give him as much as he needs. So I say to you, ask, and it will be given to you. Seek, and you will find. Knock, and the door will be open to you. For everyone who asks receives. He who seeks finds, and to him who knocks, the door will be open. Which of you fathers, if your son asks for a fish, will give him a snake instead? Or if he asks for an egg, will give him a scorpion? If you then, though you are evil, know how to give good gifts to your children, how much more will your Father in heaven give the Holy Spirit to those who ask him?"
Okay, that's beautiful scripture. He paints this picture about a, a, a neighbor, his company who comes, and he goes to his, the house next door, and he knocks. And the, the, the head of the house says, "Go away, go away." And what, uh, uh, Christy says it's confusing. Go ahead and pop a question out there, Christina. And I'll go ahead and be kind of explaining that, uh, the situation. Houses were usually one room in those days. The floor was earth. There was a platform built up, just a wooden platform, and that was the bed. And children and parents slept on the same bed. Sometimes the animals were brought into the house, and so if somebody's knocking on your door, it's like, "Go away. You're gonna wake up everybody." And if I try to get up and prepare food, or, or get an extra loaf of bread or something that I've, I have in the house, I'm going to wake up my whole household. So the neighbor's kinda grouchy and says, "Go away. I don't, uh..." But the guy just keeps knocking. He's, he's bold. And the, the, one of the things that passage is saying is be bold in your prayers. Don't be timid about asking. Expect God to answer. Somebody earlier said that when Jesus prayed, he expected an answer, and Jesus is saying exactly that. "Anticipate that the Father will ha- will hear you. So ask. Don't be timid about asking." Something, and, and, and seek. Whenever you ask, go looking. And, and knocking says that, "If you knock, the door will be opened." If you want relationship with Christ, ask, seek, knock, the door will be open to you. This does not mean that anything that I ask for, ooh, my, my pickup truck's getting a few miles on it. I'd like a brand-new, beautiful, four-wheel-drive pickup. Let me pray for that. See, that would be so selfish. And, and that's not saying, David, if you just ask, you'll get that pickup. But it's saying, if, if you desire a relationship with Christ, if you desire something good, ask, seek, knock, keep at it, be bold. I, I've had the impression a time or two when I was praying that God would almost say to me, "Don't you believe I can do this?" You're praying it as if you just say, "Well, I know this is gonna be difficult, but could you do this?" God can do anything. Uh, be bold. Tell a story real quickly about boldness. I was in South Sudan several years ago. Some of you may remember a little bit of this. Uh, it was on my first or second trip there, and Fred Dearing introduced me to a guy named Mike. He was the groundskeeper for the, the huge school and church at Yay, South Sudan. And Mike could make anything. He was a hard worker, and he, he was making furniture. He had his own little furniture shop, and he had just no tools. I mean, he had a chisel or two, he had an old saw, and a broken plane. And he was turning out some really good-looking furniture. And he, he said, "I have a dream, and my dream is that the boys in the high school here who can't go on to, or the boys in school who can't go on to finish high school, they need to learn a trade, and, and there's a demand for furniture. And I'd like to teach them how to make furniture, but look at these tools. I don't, I don't have anything to, to train them with. If I had some good tools, I could, I could take five or six boys at a time and train them to make furniture." Well, I love making furniture and doing woodworking, and on the plane home, I just got this vision that, oh, man, why don't I, why don't I make a project out of collecting tools for him? And the next time I go, I can pack them in my suitcase and take them, take an extra bag full of tools. Now here's the boldness. I had taken a class in, at Highland Woodworking under a guy who started and owns a, a tool manufacturing in, in Warren, Maine. He makes the, some of the best tools, probably the best tools, hand tools, chisels, planes, uh, saws, things like that, that are made in America. I have a few of his tools. They're, they're expensive. And so I called him up when I got home, and, um, I explained to him, actually, I think I, I wrote him. I think, I think I emailed him. I explained my vision, and I said, "If you would give me a deep discount on these tools, and I had a list, I will buy them from you and take them to Mike." And he emailed me back and said, "David, we don't give discounts on tools, but I'll give you some that we have used in our showroom as demonstrator tools." Oh my goodness. In no time at all, uh, a huge box of tools showed up. Every tool that I had asked for was in the box, and every one of them was a brand-new tool. They were not demonstrators. They were right out of the factory, pristine, brand-new tools. Uh, the tools, if I added up the value, the sale price, they would come to about a thousand five hundred dollars. And, and people at church heard about this. And, and people at church heard about this and they gave me money to buy sandpaper and, and all kinds of other stuff. I took two suitcases over to Mike and he started the school. Uh, before the war broke out, the civil war in South Sudan, he had trained boys to make furniture and two of the people, yeah, Christie, exactly right. God is good. Two of the boys that he had trained had come out of the army to go learn how to do furniture. God is good. And, and that, that came from being bold. So often we are too timid. Uh, God got into that project. And now, again, we, we can't, we can't just say, well, I'm gonna ask for this and I know it'll happen. We don't always understand God. We don't understand why some things get answered and some don't. But the lesson Jesus is teaching us here, I think, is ask, seek, knock. If the Father who loves you, i- if, if this grouchy neighbor will ask for your prayer, think about the Father who loves you. He'll never harm you. Let's see. Becky? There's some teaching in there in the middle. We won't read, but it's about, they say that this guy must be from Beelzebub. You know, it's Beelzebub that's making these things happen. Now that's, uh, that's kind of ridiculous, and Jesus points it out. Beelzebub is another name for Satan. And Jesus is using powers. He's doing teaching that's so hard for them to understand. And, and so they say, maybe, maybe Satan is doing this. Thank you, Karen. That, that's very true. Uh, and, and so, Jesus says, a house divided cannot stand. And so what he's saying there is, my power doesn't come from Satan. Satan would never do something good. You see what I'm doing is good? It's powerful. But Satan would never divide up and have part of Satan do something good. A house divided wouldn't stand. This is coming from God. And then the people ask for a sign. Can you give us a sign that you're ready, the Messiah? Uh, that's laughable. Whenever we consider all the things that Jesus has done and said and been before them, to think that they continue to ask for a sign, they should have accepted Him and seen the signs as the things that He'd already done. Becky, you ready for another chunk? Twenty-three through twenty-eight, please.
He who is not with me is against me, and he who does not gather with me scatters. When an evil spirit comes out of a man, it goes through arid places seeking rest and does not find it. Then it says, I will return to the house I left. When it arrives, it finds the house swept clean and put in order. Then it goes and takes seven other spirits, more wicked than itself, and they go in and live there. And the final condition of that man is worse than the first. As Jesus was saying these things, a woman in the crowd called out, blessed is the mother who gave you birth and nursed you. He replied, blessed rather are those who hear the word of God and obey it.
By the way, he's not putting his mother down. He's not saying that she shouldn't be blessed. He's saying the really important thing is not that family relationship. The real blessed person is the one who hears these word, believes it, follows it. I think that applies to us today. So i- if we hear the word and follow it, we are blessed. This scripture keeps us from being allowed to be a neutral observer. You know, it's kind of like you've got to decide, is this guy for real? Okay, he's my Savior. He's Christ. Yes, I'm in the camp. Or you've got to say, he's crazy. Uh, he's, he's deluded. You can't just be in the middle. Uh, I find it interesting that some religions say, well, Jesus was a good teacher, maybe even a prophet, not Christ. No, He really doesn't give us that choice. Uh, He, He sort of forces us to, to, to believe or, or disown Him. Jesus also is pointing out here how nature doesn't like a vacuum. We pull something out. If you take something out of water, the water flows in to replace it. When the Soviet Union came apart in the early nineteen nineties, immediately that power vacuum was filled. Some of the republics had a civil war. The power that the Soviet system had imposed on them, when it was gone, some really bad things happened. The Russian mafia got to be really powerful. Violence, especially kidnapping of wealthy people and holding them for ransom started. A factionalism really broke out. Muslims, Jews had, had been allowed to live in peace. Oftentimes they were, they were hated and held in contempt in some of the republics after the Soviet Union broke apart. It's power rushing in to replace, it was evil power, but it was power rushing in to replace that. What is this saying to us? Here's the, here's the question for us. When we empty ourselves of evil, what else are we to do? Think about this. Think about a person repenting and accepting Christ. That was a sermon title last week, Repent, Turn Back. Uh, two weeks ago, I guess. Repent, turn back. Okay, I've repented. Let's say I've been forgiven of my sins. Those evil spirits have been pushed aside. Now what? What, what do we need to do whenever we rid ourselves of something evil? Uh, a good example of that is we, we give up a bad habit. Fill ourselves with the Holy Spirit, absolutely. Nature pours a vacuum. Uh, fill it with good, yes. If we don't, whenever we, uh, whenever we give up a bad habit, fill that with something good. Uh, take up a hobby. Uh, our time will help us to find something. It needs to be something good. When we become Christian, oftentimes we have to give up some, some bad friends. We play, replace that with good, yes. We have to find some friends who'll support us and be good influences, not the other. So, uh, a- as Christians, we have to continue to remember that. When we, when we give up something, fill it with something good. In Lent, we talk about giving up something. I, I'm giving up something, but I'm trying to fill that and use that time for something good. Otherwise, I could use that time to just totally be wasted, or worse than that. Uh, Becky, if you would, pick up at thirty-three and, and go thirty-three through thirty-six. And, uh, and while she's reading it, let me ask you, he tells us, let our light shine. Why should we do that? Why let our light shine? Thirty-three through thirty-six.
No one lights a lamp and puts it in a place where it will be hidden or under a bowl. Instead, he puts it on its stand so that those who come in may see the light. Your eye is the lamp of your body. When your eyes are good, your whole body is also, also is full of light. But when they are bad, your body also is full of darkness. See to it then, that the light within you is not darkness. Therefore, if your whole body is full of light and no part of it dark, it will be completely lighted, as when the light of a lamp shines on you.
Okay, now Jesus says something similar to this in other gospels. When you light a lamp, you don't put it in a place, here it's interesting, it says in a place where it won't be seen. In other words, you set it on a stand. Another place he says you set it on a table. Uh, he says you wouldn't put a, a basket or a bowl over the top of it. No. When you light a light, you, you set it up so that its light will be visible and it will, it will light up the room. So why, why should we, uh, well, what's his point here? He, he's not giving us instructions on lighting. Share the good news. Thank you. Yes, share the good news with others. If I do something good for someone and someone says, David, I noticed you just gave that person a, a gift card to Publix. And I know they're hungry. Why, why do you do that? You know, I could say, well, I'm just a good person. No, that's not, that's not letting Christ's light shine. If I say, you know, I follow Jesus and He did that kind of stuff all the time. And so I'm doing as Christ teaches disciples, dispel the darkness. Yes. Let others see that light. Let them see the good news. We, we don't, we don't do our good deeds to show off, to get credit. People can see God's love in us. That's right. And in us, they see Christ. And if we have the opportunity to say that, to name the name of Christ, then our good deed becomes a witness. And, and sometimes we, we just hope that people say it's done enough good that we don't ever have to say anything. But it is so powerful when somebody catches us doing the right thing for us to witness and say, I just do that because I'm a Christian. And so often the other person will say, really? Their, your light, the light of Christ shining through you is a better way to say that, is lighting up their darkness. And there is a lot of darkness in our world today. Thank you all for those responses. Becky, I've got one more chunk for you, thirty-seven through forty-five, and then jump over if you would to verse fifty-three.
When Jesus had finished speaking, a Pharisee invited him to eat with him. So he went in and reclined at the table. But the Pharisee, noticing that Jesus did not first wash before the meal, was surprised. Then the Lord said to him, now then, you Pharisees clean the outside of the cup and dish, but inside you are full of greed and wickedness. You foolish people, did not the one who made the outside make the inside also? But give what is inside, the dish, to the poor, and everyone will be clean for you. Woe to you Pharisees, because you give God a tenth of your mint, rue, and all other kinds of garden herbs, but you neglect justice and the love of God. You should have practiced the latter without leaving the former undone. Woe to you Pharisees, because you love the most important seats in the synagogue, in the synagogues and greetings in the marketplaces. Woe to you, because you are like unmarked graves, which men walk over without knowing it. One of the experts in the law answered him, teacher, when you say these things, you insult us also. And then verse fifty-three. When Jesus left there, the Pharisees and the teachers of the law began to oppose him fiercely and to besiege him with questions, waiting to catch him in something he might say.
Okay, that sort of sets up the animosity. It, it sort of tells us that there's this rumbling under the surface now where he's on his way to Jerusalem. The scribes, the Pharisees, the Sadducees, the, the people, the religious people of his time are trying to trap him. Uh, just for a couple of things here. Uh, Jesus says several things, woe to you, woe to you. And he's talking to people who were viewed as being the most religious of their day. Why did they do all this hand washing? You know, it's, we think of hand washing as a sanitary thing. This wasn't a sanitary thing. They probably, probably got his feet washed. He maybe even got his hands washed. But during the Middle, Pharisees would sometimes wash their hands seven times. And they had rules about how much water they used and all kinds of things. Why were they washing their hands so many times as they ate? What was the reason for that? And Jesus alludes to the fact that they washed the outside of dishes. He goes on to say, it's what's on the inside that counts, not what's on the outside. But why were they doing all this hand washing? Yes, their cleansing of, uh, it's sin, but it's also uncleanness. They thought that if they had touched something that a Gentile had touched, they'd be unclean. Yes, and so they're, they're doing all this washing to get rid of uncleanness. It wasn't just Gentiles. Uh, i- if you touched a dead animal, if you touched some, a woman during her cycle, if you touched, uh, all kinds of things, you would become ceremonially unclean. And so all this washing was about that. And Jesus is saying, it's not important. It's what's in your heart that counts. Touching something doesn't make you spiritually unclean. And then he, one of the most important teachings on stewardship. He says, you guys are so meticulous about tithing. Not only would you give a tenth of your wheat, but if you grow a little bit of parsnip outside your door or dill that you sprinkle on your food, you tithe that. You take a tenth of it down to the temple and give it. Uh, they've become too dependent on rituals. It would be like me getting a twenty-dollar Starbucks card and feeling like I had to take two dollars and give it to the church because that was my tithe of the Starbucks card. That would not be a bad thing to do, but unless I had love in my heart, it becomes a bad thing to do. Jesus says you shouldn't have, you, you give your tenth without loving those who benefit. You give your tenth without loving God. You should give your tenth, he's saying, but don't neglect the other. Don't neglect to love God and to love neighbor. Nell does got it right. They've become way too dependent on rituals, on practices, on habits. And all of this latter part of this chapter has been saying, let your light shine. Let the love of God live through you. And whenever you do things, make sure you do them for the right reason. Next week will be chapter twelve. And chapter twelve is, uh, Jesus is gonna be continuing to teach. It's int- interesting, right up to the cross. Jesus continues to tell parables, to teach, and to do mighty things. So read chapter twelve if you would. And I hope to see you next Thursday evening. Hope Thursday's working out for you all. It's, uh, it's, uh, it's a good night for me right now. Well, uh, have a good evening and we'll see you next time. Blessings.